Call be ordered, will stand for the pledge of your people. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call order roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Turner.
Counselperson Brent Pyer.
Mayor attorney John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Alge.
Approval of tonight's agenda.
We'll have one item. For general motions in business, property easement approval.
Move to approve, do we have a second? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Approve. Approval of council meeting regularly minutes of June 27th, 2023.
Make the motion approved those minutes.
And minutes of the regularly June. Oh, we got it on there twice. It's gonna be a double warning me.
I'll second.
Again, a motion or second, questions or discussion? Here you go, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Approve, that'll carry finance and budget, that's accounts payable, and the accounts payable, the additional accounts payable, and the additional accounts payable. Any questions, give the finance director a turn. Is it yours coming up there? See, but yeah, I don't know if it's bits and triples or everything.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Give them my hold. You up for it?
Yeah.
A motion to approve, give them a second.
I'll second that.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Approve, that carries. That's gonna take us ready to motions in general business. Bill, do you have something?
How do you do that?
No, we're doing it now, sorry.
No.
Alright, due to some late breaking, we've got a developed news that is still in the works on the Schuman Business Park. There is the need to put in an easement in the northwest corner of.
Lot five.
Lot five, above the top of Schuman Drive.
Yep.
Lot five, lot one, Schuman Business Park four.
And it would allow the construction for street, brand new street construction to service property in the area, the undeveloped area north of Schuman Business Park, QuickTrip, where graph auctions are, pure pleasure. If that area ever comes into the city, then it allows the accessibility there under the assumption that MINDOT will keep pushing for an elimination of their access. So the current, the two property owners that are negotiating this easement are both in agreement to granting it. Their question is, since there would be no benefit to them, because they've got all the accessibility they need, that they would like to request that they would not then see any assessment for that street construction, for the brand new portion of what would come in at some point in time.
If and when the day ever comes. You understand that, Josh?
Yeah.
This has gotta be in place to make everything else go. And we have two landlords in agreement to make it in place. How do you want that motion stayed, though?
The motion could be to grant the city administrator and mayor the authority to sign the agreement with the given property owner.
So moved, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Alright, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Approve, that carries.
Glad to hear that very much.
Next, motions in general business. Compliance action, property cleanup. On June 30th, Veronica Gonzalez, 201 Third Street Southwest, was served an order to repair the bait infestation on behalf of the city of Sturfield. She was ordered to number one, repair all cracks and holes in the barn shed and otherwise secure it to prevent roads from accessing it. And number two, remove and abate the road infestation. She was notified that the council will review the compliance at tonight's meeting. If she fails to complete the corrective actions, the council has two options. Number one would be to request an administrative warrant to search the barn shed pursuant to Minnesota statutes to determine the extent of the infestation and the need for demolition. Or the option two would be bring a motion for summary enforcement of this order in Homestead County District Court to allow the city to repair the barn shed and abate the road infestation pursuant to Minnesota statutes. Attorney left is recommending, excuse me, that if the property has not been cleaned up and the shed repaired to our city's satisfaction, the council will utilize the administrative warrant to gain access inside the shed. This will allow for the city and the county inspectors got safe to document conditions inside and structural integrity or lack thereof. Questions or discussion?
So on your desk, I've got pictures as of 10:00 this morning on what has been done at the property site.
Do you have a copy of the picture, Veronica? Has more been done since 10:00 this morning, or is this?
I think we do have, yeah.
How much? How much is inaccurate in these pictures?
Um, I'd say it's pretty accurate right now.
Huh?
It's pretty accurate, I was.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Don't some questions, discussion?
Well, I believe that it's cleaner than it was when we were here a couple weeks ago. But you can't, there's no way to know what's inside and/or if it is, if there is a road infestation.
Or.
Or structurally some, that's my biggest concern. I, I wouldn't, you know, I don't wanna try to shove, shove it down to make or tear it down. But obviously, if it's structurally unsown, we'd have to. So I mean, I tend to follow the attorney's recommendation of calling for the administrative warrant.
Josh?
Yeah, I think, I think the picture's on the backside, like with those wood piles. I don't know what's, what's back there, so it'd be earned it.
Uh, attorney left, would it warrant also when we go to have the fire chief there to see if it's a fire hazard or something, do?
Yes, I think that's a good idea as well. As much public safety personnel as, as is available to accompany us. And then we, it'll give her some additional time to continue to make progress too.
Well, it's, the administrative warrant is, you have it there, actually, would be to her advantage too, if we get in there and there's no road infestation and structures on, it would be to her advantage.
Yeah.
If we feel otherwise, we gotta get in there and see.
Yep. And that you would, you know, the next step would be then to, to proceed to district court where she would have an opportunity as well to present her case at that point as well, so.
Yeah, well, I agree with that. And I mean, I drove by there earlier and I would like, yeah, there's some, some repair work that's been done, but that's all we can tell, you know, without actually going inside and looking, it's, it's hard to really know is the building, you know, safe? Or whatever, so. I'm, I'm glad to see some progress is gonna be made too.
Brent?
I've been agreeing that also, I think we also went to neighbors to make sure there isn't road infestation. I mean, that's a big concern for the whole neighborhood.
Alright, do you have anything else to add, Kirk? Alright, we have a motion. Who wants to do this, which one you want to do? A motion requests administrative warrant to search the barn shed statutes to determine the extent of the infestation and need for demolition.
I'll make that motion. Number one.
To go with number one?
Yeah.
We have a motion requesting.
I'll second.
Do we have a second to request administrative warrant to search the barn shed pursuant to Minnesota statutes to determine the extent of the infestation? Any questions or discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Approve, that carries. Any further action on that tonight, Melanie? Alright, that takes us next to resolution receiving study and call for public hearing feasibility study.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, resolution receiving feasibility study calling for public hearing for 2024 CIP street utility improvements. SEH has completed feasibility study for the 2024 CIP, which was presented tonight. I guess it's gonna be presented, SEH presented tonight, right, SEH?
Yep.
So let's have her do the presentation and continue on.
Good, great. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Alright. So we have completed the feasibility report for what was proposed for the 2024 capital improvement project, so even though SEH has skipped that part. The project limits include Berg Boulevard Southeast, Teresa Court, Highland Court, and we also put in a block of Fifth Street Southeast. It is, um, you'll see, in mention. So introduction, this really follows along with the feasibility report step by step. Sorry, it's a very boring presentation. Um, I will sum it up. Introduction is that the Berg Boulevard area in concern was constructed in the eighties. At the time, there is a portion of the sanitary sewer that is constructed with clay and a portion that is constructed with PVC, which was a newer element at the time for sanitary sewer. And then the water main was done with ductile iron pipe that was wrapped. So as we do with every feasibility report, we conduct inspections of all the infrastructure, evaluate what the conditions are for the pavement, for each of the storm, sanitary, and water main, and go through condition rating and figuring out what the best thing would be for it. So this talks a little bit more about the existing conditions. And there, let's see. As for Fifth Street Southeast, the date of it is unknown. I did find when it was platted was 1917, I believe. But when it was constructed, sometime between there and the sixties is when our records start, so.
There's no sanitary water now?
There is no sanitary or water or storm sewer running down that roadway. This would be just street and sidewalk, so. Here's conditions of Berg Boulevard. As you can see, there are many places in the road where deterioration has surpassed what we can do for maintenance. Numerous defects, and Fifth Street Southeast is actually worse. One thing with Fifth Street Southeast is there's only two property owners. One is a church to the south and a mobile park to the north, both of which are more than one-sided lots. And as far as how things would be distributed, we do need to have some discussion on the north property as it's a block. They have parcel, or their parcel is four-sided for right of way. I believe this is the long side for them, so they would not be assessed. This would all be under city funds. It's me too.
The Baptist Church?
Yep, the Baptist Church, they, their short side, well, they have three sides on their parcel, so it would either be main or first, but this would be their long side. So city would take up, per current policy, the city would take up funding their portion of things, so.
There's also a big issue in that stretch right by the church, especially with drainage. If you look, there's a utility box there for streetlight poles or main streetlights, and the whole box is tipped, everything's settled on sidewalks, all tipped and settled in that area also.
So we did do a geotechnical investigation of the area. As far as our results show, it's pretty consistent with most of town. There are, there is glacial till in areas. We will run into some wet spots, just like we do with most of our projects. Not much different, except for it does show warrant for need for that subsurface drainage, so. But nothing too surprising. As for, as far as the history of water main, there is a map of the watering breaks that have occurred. And as I mentioned, this was ductile iron pipe, and it was wrapped in a polyethylene. And at the time, it was believed that that would protect the ductile iron from corrosion in hot soils. It is a common practice used. However, if you think of a heavy-duty garbage bag going around anything that's being constructed, and then they're tamping around it, and you're very highly prone to rips, tears, holes, things that happen. And with that groundwater that has run through our corrosive soils still gets in touch with that main, we get corrosion and blocking, and that has led to our breaks. Our new standard is PVC, and we've had very good luck with PVC. Sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer is not in that bad of shape. I've seen much worse, but it's not necessarily good. It's in fair condition. The clay sewer, although it's actually in better alignment and shape than the PVC, has many cracks, and that's where we have our I and I problems, our infiltration problems of it seeping through the cracks and seeping through those three-foot joint sections, which leads to more cost in treatment because all of that water then goes to the waste water treatment plant. The PVC that was installed, you can see a few places, there's some deformities. I don't know when that deformity will cause a break. There's a few protrusions. We could go about the project in a way to say, hey, let's just do a spot repair here, here, here. But as what was estimated in the feasibility report is for full repair, giving us that option now, and we can pull back if wanted.
This wouldn't be an option for slip lining?
It would not. The problem with slip lining that I see for this one, the PVC would not be an option to be slip lined because of the deformities. With the clay, we could go and repair a few spots and slip line it. But then the question is, is where do we stop with services? Because we actually have more linear footage of service lines that are infiltrating into our system than we do mains. And just taking care of the mains does not take care of our problem. And it is our policy to go back to the right of way. So you can't really slip line just to the right of way, is the problem there. So after discussions with Sean, estimated in for just a full replacement. But still an option, we could investigate further with doing the project.
You know, I'll take Sean and yours for order for it. I just like to make sure options are any one down there, just let's go.
Yep.
So I don't want you to explain none of this one.
So this is just a summary of the deformities. Again, it's, it's in fair shape. It's not a critical main that I would be like, yes, we have to repair and replace it now. But if we're redoing the road, there's benefits for taking care of what's underneath it. Storm sewer, there's not a main of storm sewer in this era either. There are just a few connection points at each intersection that run to either a creek or the new labor pond that was installed. So it's minimal in terms of storm sewer work that would need to be done. We would evaluate it for capturing the appropriate amount of storm. We did not hear of a history of drainage issues for this area. So it, what would be most likely be replace almost what's there, maybe add a couple catch basins to capture the water. So not in bad shape either, so. Unfortunately, it's hard to save that pipe if we're replacing the water sewer beneath it. So that leads to just changes as is. So recommendations, kinda touched on those as we went through the conditions. Recommendations went for the high number, so we have expectations. And like I said, we do have some options to back down on sanitary. But I do not recommend not replacing the water, because we do have a problem there. So roadway. You can see both of the areas, but our purpose, obviously, we like to provide a smooth, safe route for all modes of transportation. So proposed would be Berg Boulevard. And Berg Boulevard historically has been awarded Safe Roads to School funding. The project was designed to work sidewalking along Berg Boulevard. But then it was decided to hold off and do the improvements of the sidewalk when the roadway was rehabilitated, so. That being said, public right of way, we have our standard 66 feet. I am showing an eight-foot boulevard. Through preliminary design, we can go to the six-foot. The reason for the eight-foot is this does connect to an existing sidewalk further down that does have a wider boulevard. So we would need a transition area if we were to switch that boulevard. Also, the setbacks for the houses here, with an eight-foot boulevard, we would have 24 feet from the front of face of any house to the back of sidewalk. Today, our setback is 25. So we are one foot off. That is reason to play with it. But again, just showing worst-case scenario of how much we need to disturb. Fifth Street is narrower. It currently has a 36-foot roadway with sidewalk right behind the back of curb on both sides. One of them is four feet, one of them is five. You will notice in there that I don't recommend four or five, but six when we're right behind curb. With this, I would propose that curb to have a back sill to be able to hold the sidewalk up, minimizing settlement issues of the two different concrete pores. But the reason for going to six feet is to allow for signs to be installed at some, in some place or light poles or any utility that needs to come up in that two-foot obstruction. It's not worth it to try to maintain a foot and a half to two feet of grass, so we pave it. Just like we did over on the 2020-2021 project, be very similar to that same setup due to the limited right of way type of condition use that this project is in. And just be set up very similarly. We already talked about replacement of sanitary sewer, but if there were any questions there, we can discuss more. Again, talked about the water main shifting away from wrapping the ductile iron because earth moves and things happen. So going to PVC and storm sewer, we would evaluate it just like we do every other project and make sure we are capturing that tenure of rent and getting a clear, safe lane on major surfaces, so. So we'd be looking at this being multi-phased. This project, obviously with the two cul-de-sacs, Berg Boulevard would likely be done in three phases or it would almost have to be done in three phases. So we'd have to, with design, look at the constructability of everything and lay it out so that it's worthwhile for everyone involved of getting that done, but also maintaining as much access as possible during construction. Projected project costs. Total is about $2.9 million. I'm sorry, prices just are not going down. You can see the breakdown on table two. And so that'd be about 1.7 for street. And this does include Fifth, all combined in, as it wouldn't be bid separately. Part of the bonus, I guess, to do Fifth with Berg Boulevard is to have the contractor here. A road crew can work on Fifth while an underground crew's working underground on Berg, and then they just follow each other. At least that's the way we try to get it set up and planned. But definitely benefits for doing Fifth with a larger project for better prices and quantities. Financial options. I have followed the current assessment policy as that's all I have to go off of.
So far.
So far, and that can change at any time of approval. The average cost, I don't think I got it in here, but it breaks down to about $95 a foot.
99.2, so.
99.2, there we go. So, which is in line with where we have been. And actually, it's less than current project going on of what was estimated. So kind of breakdown of schedule, sorry, you can't see the very bottom, but schedule for this project to be proposed is to accept the feasibility report today and then call for that improvement hearing. That in the hearing would be at our first meeting in August, giving us time to get publication and notification out about the hearing. And with approval today, it would be hopeful to be able to approve plans and specs at our first meeting in January, allowing for bids to occur in February. So once we have our public hearing, that is usually when the council goes and orders that plans and specs be prepared. And it's not until that approval is given that we go out and get topographic survey and keep working towards in design. So with that, if we have approval at the beginning of August, I likely will have something to work off of in September. So that's, it'd be really difficult to bid at nine December. So that's, it'd be really difficult to bid at nine December at this point. So. Any questions about the schedule?
What's your hearing on the first?
Hmm?
What's your hearing, is there a hearing on the first out there?
The first hearing, no, that's publishing the notice in the paper. We have to publish it twice, so that's just setting the dates. The the actual hearing would be on the eighth.
Okay, that's why I was reading on here, and that's why I thought it would be.
So conclusion, we do recommend a project take place. Um, we do recommend the water main, uh, be replaced. Sanitary sewer with the work that's going on, it does seem feasible to replace the sanitary sewer and then upgrade the storm sewer with the roadway improvements with sidewalk.
So I've got time?
That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for John? Good night. Look for books.
Didn't stop before that's my house.
Josh, you got anything?
Yeah, it would help me a lot.
No, everything looks good.
Brian?
Nope.
All right, the complete feasibility study. Now, the next step is set a public hearing date to discuss the proposed project and assessments. Public comments will be heard at that meeting. Staff will send out notices to property owners within the proposed project area and publish twice in the local paper. Public hearing could be scheduled on the August eighth. Once the public hearing has been held, the council will determine at that time if they should proceed with the twenty-twenty-four CIP, which will be in the fourth fiscal year at that time. So with that's requested tonight, if there's no more discussion or questions about Resolution twenty-twenty-three, dash, a resolution receiving feasibility study and calling a public hearing on twenty-twenty-four Street and Uggility Products. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion without the resolutions.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other questions? Hearing on all favor say aye. I have the bowls that will carry it. Thank you. We just ran out of stuff. We're into the mayor's staff and consulting boards now. Business is going well. Tonight, Mayor's report. City would like to send their sympathies to the families of Dave Spurbeck and a past council member's brother, Wayne Optegraff, Dick's brother passed away here. Also, city would like to send a big thank you out to our Chamber of Commerce and all the volunteers. We helped put out another spectacular summer fest. It was hot, but it was fun. It was a couple long days, but boy, we had a great turnout of everything. We didn't have what we had anyhow. Get a little boys and stay up all night for the dance, so. Don't forget, Friday night, Fun and Stevie Carr shows all summer long, every Friday, and stop out there. We still have our Barricade Concert Series, which are a huge smash. Way to go, Sandra. Tomorrow night will be a big deal. Melanie ought to bring you a better hat along. Come on out there, we're having a couple meat raffles and.
Did you say tomorrow?
Uh-huh.
Did you say tomorrow night?
Yep. Mayor's gonna be throwing a party out there, so.
I will, I'll see what I can do to have the pleasure of attending another council meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay, I'll start at six thirty if you get time.
Oh, okay.
All right, be sure that everybody come out. The visiting atmosphere has been great. It's been perfect. Don't think it's too hot, because we got just the right amount of heat at just the right time. Sean has set that up great. He will. Our southern neighbors, Recede, will be celebrating their thirty-ninth annual Recede Lions BBQ Chicken and Dance. If you've never been to it, it is a good time, still is a good time. I like the better when they serve a beer and gallon of milk jugs, so. And for the good days. It's delicious and fun, and they know how to put on a party, and they really do. They had a great bad there and a great deal. So head on down, hope the Lions out, Recede. That's all I've got right now for mine. City Administrator Bill, what do you got?
Uh, pretty brief report. Uh, obviously, we'll, Nate and I will take team on some library updates there with Jeremiah. And then, um, on Thursday, Carl and I will be meeting with the finance committee and our city's financial advisor to take the first forehand to looking at options for you all to consider. Um, if assessment policies, policies should be adjusted or changed or revised a little bit, which could include a change for the current project or and/or future projects. So we'll be reporting back to you on that, um, for full continuity.
Any questions for Bill? There you go, thank you, Bill. For a short, concise report this time, appreciate that. It's kind of a half-sham deal. Finance Director Garland, you got a report?
Um, working on the twenty-twenty-four budget. So if you guys have ideas, thoughts, concerns, things that we need to change, do, wanna put in, wanna look at, please let me know so I can get that in preliminary budget to move forward with that.
Questions for Carl? All right, they'll all put their thinking caps on, I'm sure. All right, thanks, guys. What would work? Sean?
Uh, reported there, there's four million different projects going on, so very busy. But, uh, the one thing I want to go and run over real quick is on the south project for the Fifth Avenue. We, the contractors at our request, who always have access to Bryn Park or Bryn Portigay, that they cannot build the road on the north half and do the underground on the south half, so they pulled out the underground on the south half for two weeks. They'll finish the north half, and then when they get that done, they'll come back. That was at our request so that those people could get into their workplaces. We're sitting fine schedule-wise with it. Uh, I know one homeowner called me today and had concerns. When I explained to him, he was more than happy to, or he understood. So, uh, but that was our decision not, so people are complaining that ours not there. That was more else.
Well, we're saving money on lawnmower gas.
Yeah.
Marge. Yeah, that's a good thing. Hey, any questions for Sean today? All right, thank you, Sean. Tell the guys to do the. City Engineer Jenna, you got anymore?
I'll just touch based on the north project. It's still progressing, roads being built. Um, so I think they expect, we do have a meeting tomorrow, but I, what I heard is concrete would come in two weeks or around two weeks from now. So, um, as they first tell that way.
They still talking about blacktopping up the fourth and then do the other part of the way down and do it all?
They did talk about that last week at our meeting. Um, again, we'll check in tomorrow. We have not heard anything with getting scheduled.
They were trying to get in the rest, trying to get up here and do it. So it's up to if Rock, Shannon, or you do it.
Yep.
Thank you for putting a lot of that back, too.
Yes.
Any other questions for the city engineer? Nope. Okay, it must be doing something right, yeah.
I hope so.
Now, Nate, do we have a library director, or are you just here to observe, or do you? You got a report?
I, I tried to get a stuff up to get a seat, but.
Camped out early just to get.
Yeah. I put in like my best bid, yeah.
So do you have a report for us, is what I'm asking?
Um, no, I, oh.
Another library.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Now the project.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep, the project.
Perfect. That's all we, fire chief's report.
So for the month of June, we had a total of fifty-nine calls per service. Nine of them were being fire-related, uh, fifty EMS runs, which brings us up to three-hundred-and-eighty EMS runs for the year. So, um, we'll look at, will surpass what we've done previous years. So should be the final update on Engine Three, so it is in-house, being outfitted with loose equipment, most of which is here. Of course, with shortages and, you know, tough times getting some things. Fire'd have to move some stuff around, but it will be going into service after we have two in-service training nights with the whole department. So each squad will attend one of the nights. So that'll be next week and then the last week of July. So they will go into service, uh, to the public on August first. On August fourteenth, that's a Monday night at six-thirty, uh, we are gonna have a push-in ceremony just to celebrate the new truck. It's a traditional type of thing the fire departments do. We've never done it, so it'll be our first. Uh, so we'd like to invite you all and the public as well. So, uh, that'll be getting advertised as well. At our meeting last night, we moved one cadet firefighter, two firefighters, so we'll be a probationary member of the fire department, which brings us to, uh, we'll be looking at, um, potentially hiring three or four by the end of the year to get our staffing back where it should be with some vacancies that have come up. And then also looking forward to the end of the year, uh, we'll need to revisit our capital equipment replacement schedule because that's everything that Vance and Nate and Carl had worked on is pretty much an all-in void with price increases. We have to revisit and make our priorities of what needs to be done in alignment. We want to have that kind of luckened out before the end of the year, too. So that's just some of the stuff coming up that we're looking at, so.
Um, you gonna participate, like, what the fire department is again this year, National Night Out, coming up?
So that was brought up at our business meeting last night. And we've always gone off of, we'd get a list from the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
So last year, we never got a list, but we did hear some concerns, complaints that we weren't there. So, uh, I guess I just looked to the sheriff's department that when the county sheriff's department gets a list that let us know and we'd be happy to, to get trucks out and about.
Somebody can get a list, we get a list, somebody can.
Well, if we could just make sure that we get that, we'll, we'll definitely look and participate in that.
Yeah, they always, the kids always look forward to that. And I believe you were here last, no, Nate was here last night. I'm thanking the fire department, they came, you came from your practice to try and locate my grandson, which turned out was just a misunderstanding between him and his father. But thank you very much for all that.
Thank you, that was a misunderstanding.
Yeah. All right, any other, any questions for Chief? Pool Director, you got a report?
Super busy. Uh, uh, my fourth weekend is busy. We hit capacity on the third. There were seven-hundred-and-eighty-two patrons, and we closed at six-thirty that day. Uh, tonight, we had over two-hundred-and-fifty swimmers. The chamber was great to work with. The month of June, we had just under twelve thousand people for open swim. That does not include swim lessons, which have been busy. And so far, it's been a cooler July, but, so. We've been a bit, a lot of chlorine in there, not. Saving money on.
How many days to close for rain so far this year?
We all wish it was a few. You're losing, you're saving money on lawnmower gas, but you're probably spending more on four-eight dollars.
Any other questions for Dave? How was the concession stand going?
Busy. We're frequent visitors to Fairway.
All right.
So it's good.
Any other questions for Dave? Melanie, do you have anything else you want to add over here?
I do not.
All right.
Thank you.
I hope they present the committee commission and board reports. Chamber of Commerce. Now, did they send anything along with you that you want to say or?
No, we're resting up right now from the celebration, summer fest, but October will be here soon, so October fest.
Well, well-deserved rest, so we guys will be there. EDA, HRA, we will meet next week. Finance?
We're meeting on Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday? Library. Looks like we've got a feasibility con- condition assessment from the library twenty-twenty-three. Nate, do you have anything to say about that?
Yeah, so that was, um, a real analysis of our existing building and how ready it is for an expansion and some of the things that might go into that. Um, the one takeaway that I was most impressed with, so were the architects, was what incredible shape our existing building is in. And that is a testament to a really well-functioning city and, uh, that has a great relationship between the library and public works. And Sean should be credited with that, because he's been doing it longer than me. And, um.
What about the mayor and council, you get more credit?
You are awesome. Um, and, and, but, uh, yeah, that totally, uh, there are things in there that I, you know, interesting, um, things to me about, uh, connections between problems we have and, and where the building deviates from its original design. Um, and areas that, uh, it's where it deviated from its original design are improvements. And, um, it is, it is an interesting report that I'm very confident I'm one of the few people on Earth who's read all of. So, um, uh. I don't know, Bill, do you have anything you want to add, or?
I just said how that we're into unofficial proposed project. You'll see the library updates under the board because it's our library board that's basically heading up this project for us. And then Nate will still be here under his directorship for just normal operations things. So if you see this operation, that's the reason why. Um, uh, then you'll also be getting eventually here that they were fine-tuning their final contract with us. So we'll have that ready to go, um, for now. And, but otherwise, off to a good, good start, and they seem excited about giving us the open hand here.
Jeremiah, you got anything?
Um, no, but the, uh, meeting with the architecture department all went well. A lot of people had lots of questions.
Nate, I'd like to thank you for keeping me updated.
Oh.
Read stuff.
Thrilled to do it.
Thrilled. I've never heard of meeting with people that way.
I don't get a lot of FaceTime with the mayor, so.
All right, any other questions for Nate? All right, keep it up. Department Board?
Uh, we met last night. Uh, I guess the takeaways are, we're gonna have the, uh, Arrowing Ridge. That path is gonna be paved by the end of the month, they're hoping. We donate some money to the skate park. What else is there? The, uh, the restrooms and concession stand at Barricade at the amphitheater still held up by the state.
Uh, update on that. Uh, today I found out we are supposed to have it by the end of the week. With scheduling to start digging next week. I just found it out this afternoon.
Um, the skate park, uh, they should start pouring concrete. Was it next week, Sean?
Week after.
Week after.
The pad is placed, it's all ready to go for the concrete, guys. It'll never be here in the next.
Is that where you guys met last night?
Yep.
I was like looking down there.
Good. Otherwise, anything, they haven't said anything, Sean, anything big? Oh, we're, uh, they're gonna move one hole of the disc golf course so it doesn't interfere with the new concession stand. They already got that figured out, and, uh, we'll be working on that.
Good.
And the swing set for Arrowing Ridge will be in next week, and we'll place it as soon as it comes in.
All right, any other questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. Personnel?
Nothing.
Plan zoning?
Nothing.
Public safety. We have calls for service main hall.
I'll send them to that.
Yes, any calls?
Um, many of you know, um, my time there in Circles coming to an end. And just like I say, I've appreciated the opportunity to work down here and, um, very thankful that you guys are all, city and council is always great to work with. Um, so, yeah, just, uh, very appreciative of that. It was a really privilege, so thank you very much. And then behind me, Deputy Justin Castle, he is going to be taking over for me. He also will be a, is a resident of Circles, like I was.
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
Uh, so he'll, he'll be together this rest of this week, and I'll be down at the end of this week. And then he'll be on his own next week, so.
Are you going back to shift then, or what?
I am going back to utility, Deputy. Are you familiar with that as well?
Yes.
Utility.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's cool.
Do whatever it needs to get done.
What are the hours?
Yep.
What hours are you back to that?
Uh, Monday to Friday.
Oh, yeah, okay, so it sounds.
It fluctuates a little bit on the hours, but it's mostly daytime.
Good.
You're originally from Spring Valley?
I'm originally from Grand Mountain.
Grand Mountain, your grandmother lives in Spring Valley, doesn't she?
What's that?
Your grandmother lives in Spring Valley, doesn't she?
No.
Where she live?
I've got grandparents.
Does your grandpa name itself?
No.
I do not. My grandparents in Adams.
She lied to me. She, this Michelle said her grandson was gonna be here.
I don't know, I still got a crazy grandmother, dude.
I might have to, if you investigate this, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know who she's talking about, but. You're getting married in October, too.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I'm gonna go there. Yeah, I'm getting married in October. I moved here and, uh, once I got hired, I moved to the apartments, but then I bought a house right in the middle of construction, so. I can be here.
Still.
Yeah, so I'm excited to hit this four-years run. Uh, I'm a proactive person. I'm gonna be all over traffic staff warrants, uh, handing off stickers, little ice cream tickets to little kids. I like being a public figure to people. I wanna show that we're not all that bad. You know, he's pretty bad, mean, but.
You know, he's pretty bad, mean, but I buy my best from that. Like I'm gonna make my face known to the city, why people.
How long you with the church, Paul?
Two and a half years-ish, so not very long, pretty new to this, so there's gonna be some bumps. I'm gonna need some help with a few things, but I learned pretty quick.
Welcome aboard, yeah, welcome aboard. Don't worry about him if he ever calls you.
That's right, I won't give him phone calls all the time.
Don't say that. So if I call that number, I'll get you doing?
Well, if you go to the voicemail, I'll send a camera. Actually, if you have any questions, call during this week, next week, and he'll be gone, but this week he'll be here.
Well, he'll be around for National Night Out then.
Yep.
Good, good, that'd be a good time to meet him.
We've taken a picture with him this year.
Good, well, it'll be a good time for him to meet a lot of the folks around town.
Probably try setting that picture up, I'm sure they'll be nagging at me to get a picture with you at some point.
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna do it. I'm sorry. I wish one of these times I'd get somebody a little closer to my height, the picture would be pretty funny.
I gotta stand there next to Jason.
All right, any other questions?
Which one of you guys rocks faster?
Obviously.
One of us can even run.
He's twenty-three after forty-six.
All right, thanks a lot. Public works maybe nothing, ready?
Uh, no report.
Broke out.
Minutes in your packet, nothing really essential for us at this point in time.
This is a one we've been waiting a long time for. Transit advisory committee.
For quarter report.
There you go.
Uh, I'd like to draw your attention to the last column, that's us. The, we are number one with the number of passengers about midway down, eighteen hundred and six, which is quite substantial change from when we, let's say I started five or six years ago. And our number of riders per hour is up to two, two point nine one three is the benchmark, and so we're in the top top three with number of riders per hour and number one for total number of passengers. So this is significant change over the last several years when we started out at point eight numbers riders per hour. And so very exciting on this first quarter report. The citizens are using the service and it's very involved. Now, second page, bringing it to the rail. Carla says, any ideas that you have for money? I would like to request if the city council would set aside twenty thousand dollars for the future bus replacement in the next couple of years, twenty-four, twenty-five, our bus is gonna be up for replacement. And the twenty percent that is, that state covers the eighty percent cost of the bus and we, our responsibility is twenty percent and the buses now are looking at about two hundred thousand dollars. So I was gonna say if you guys would consider discussing a future budget, if you would be willing to set aside some money for a bus replacement.
Is this bus, is this our, stays in our town now, is this one, who's the sheriff, was Chad here?
Correct, this is our bus.
What do you, what are the, attributed to the uptick in ridership, like price of gas or?
I didn't get, I didn't get the, any real answer, they've done a lot of advertising and didn't know if, what the, what the change was.
What is the price of one-way ticket yet, or is it either one-way, two-way? Can you just go one-way or?
Go one-way, it's, I believe, three dollars for one-way.
Is that a senior citizen discount there or?
It's, I don't know.
I'm in line for that stuff. Wow, that's great, you know, I ain't gonna say it's great news, we gotta start finding more money, but it's great news if they're starting to take advantage of it.
Taking advantage.
Maybe it's because of our committee member.
I think it's because Sealem's on.
Any other questions? Well, this is good news, so thank you. That will take us into communications, now we've got a letter here from Ag Partners, I'm sure you all read it, they started a new facility off just outside of town, if you look at the map, that's right across from the entrance to Matthews Bit out there. Darren Bean Farm. We got the report from the SELM, Bill, did you go over that one?
Yep, quarterly meeting, but you all are invited from time to time, obviously, if you want to attend. So they basically went over the legislative update news.
All right, and then you also have the twenty twenty-three legislative session overview.
And I need to give that a once-over because obviously, as you've heard in the news with the cannabis marijuana things, there could be some potential for us to have to look at things down the road if that becomes more of an issue here, so. Keep that in mind, it's probably the biggest pending item.
I think also there's that. Just the next month or so, anyone that hasn't got a license can just go get a license now.
Oh, I don't, I don't wanna review any of that, because it's a license, I just said a session of the ASMR state, it's sixty-six.
All right. With that, we go to the open mic. Amy went up here tonight on the open mic. Okay, the city council welcomes and encourages participation from community members. Please keep in mind that your comments be referred into city business, must adhere to that privacy rules, so no employee's name may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns. We would also request that your comments be limited to four minutes, speakers be recognized only once. At this time, we'll ask anyone who would like to address the city council, please step up to the podium and state your name. Can we?
Did you have anything short for the, for you to add someone?
No, no.